Doesn't that come through to you?
You hear me?
Yeah.
Several times.
Oh, your laptop needs to have all audio on.
Which audio level?
All your audio, your speakers and your mic.
Okay, we ready? Good evening. The City and Riverbank Planning Commission Meeting of December 21st, 2021 is
We don't have audio.
Is now open.
We don't have audio. We have audio in the room, but not on Zoom.
I'm hoping Santa brings you a new audio system.
Me too. Gabriel, can you turn off Ben Bilham's camera?
Remember when I record, I record to the cloud?
Yeah, right. Can you turn your microphone on? We'll do another test.
It's on.
It's on.
You're talking in the background. I can't hear it.
After 10.
I know. Just trying to get it going.
They are?
Yeah.
Can I try again? Oh, no. Turn your microphone over one of them. One of the...
Hello?
I see you, Ben. Can you read?
Can you hear me, Ben?
I can.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready again?
We're good to go.
Okay, ready to go. Okay, maybe we have roll call.
This meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, maybe we have roll call, please.
There you go. Chair Stewart?
Here.
Vice Chair Link?
Here.
Commissioner Dynan?
Here.
Commissioner Vasso?
Here.
Commissioner Fenrich has an excused absence today. And Commissioner Rubin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, at this time, any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to so declare at this time. Public comments, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission board. Consent calendar. All items?
We have comments.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Agers.
Let me turn your microphone off. Sorry, Jamie. Hi, you.
Is it on now? Okay. My name's Jamie Agers. For the record, that's spelled A-G-G-E-R-S. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue. That's in the unincorporated portion of Stanislaus County with a Modesto mailing address. My husband and I moved out of the city of Modesto city limits 35 years ago. We are very concerned about a project called Riverwalk that's being proposed for Riverbank. It would go from the current city limits all the way to Patterson Road, all the way to McHenry Avenue, which is where I live, all the way to the river, adding an additional 1,500 acres to the city limits. We moved out of the city because we don't want to live in the city. So we're very concerned about this proposal. We're also concerned because we were not notified about the project, even though we are within the project area. Our parcel and all of our neighbors' parcels are listed in the notice of preparation that came out in June. We learned about it from a front page article on the Modesto Bee. We proposed a similar project proposed by a developer named Groupie approximately 15 years ago, and we opposed this plan as well. As I'm sure you're aware, Riverbank's sphere of influence was increased by 1,500 acres, the same amount that would be added now, just five short years ago in 2016. And the first 400 acres of this area is just now beginning to develop. Given that, a request to add another 1,500 acres to your sphere of influence seems premature, if warranted at all. I urge you to deny this project without moving it forward to LAFKA when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dan Whitstone. I also live on McHenry Avenue, Modesto. Our property, as well as most of these people here, the house overlooks the river bottom where this project, Riverwalk project, is proposed to be developed. It's just some wonderful area. It's prime ag land, runs up to the river. It's just beautiful land that doesn't need to be developed now or maybe ever. Again, we encourage you to get out there and look at this area. Again, it's pristine ag land. So please, we know the EIR is coming down the pipeline, so please, I don't know if that goes before you guys, but review that with a critical eye and give a lot of thought to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
My name is Barney Agers. I live on McHenry Avenue, just south of the bridge on the east side. Overlooked the beautiful bottom land, which is partly in floodplain. One of my high school classmates became a chief legislative analyst for 20-some years for the state of California, and she and others wrote a book on reasons not to build in a floodplain. Essentially, the developer comes in, builds, leaves, and when it floods, like it does over here, right here in Riverbank, the developers know where to be found. There are several other reasons not to build out there. Several other reasons. 3,000 new homes with a four-lane road going through there, exiting out onto McHenry Avenue, just south of the bridge. Think of the traffic impacts that would have on the entire area, not just McHenry Avenue, Patterson Road, Coffee Road, Oakdale Road, Kernan. It's a bad idea from that standpoint, just the traffic impacts. The proposal calls for 2 million gallons of water to be stored. At Del Rio, the two tanks there are a quarter million gallons each. This is eight times that amount. I don't know if any of you have heard the term subsidence. That's what happens when a large amount of water is pulled out of an area and the ground starts sinking. San Luis Obispo area has a huge problem with that. The impacts on schools, sewage, right now, the proposal calls for putting a sewage line underneath the Stanislaus River and putting the sewage into Riverbank's inadequate sewage treatment plant. I'm sure somebody's going to expand that, but at what cost and who's going to pay for all the infrastructure on this? As Mr. Whitstone said, it's prime, number-one prime farmland. And I understand that there's supposed to be mitigation acre for acre. If you remove 1,500 acres of ag land, where are you going to replace that ag land of equal quality? I wonder if anyone has thought about that. The impacts of this are immense, and I urge this commission to do some homework and figure out where you're going with this and how it's going to affect this entire area, not to mention take away the cushion between Modesto and Riverbank, not to mention the impact on the people in River Heights, is what I call it. Some folks refer to it as Snob Hill, but huge amount of impacts that you need to know about. I urge you to study and not just rubber stamp this when it's time to vote on it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Whitstone, W-H-E-T-S-T-O-N-E. I also live on McHenry Avenue in Modesto. My sister lives here in Riverbank, over on Candlewood. She couldn't be here tonight. She works very hard. She works in Escalon, and she wanted me to say, and she will be here probably next time to say this and more, that River Road, Santa Fe, and, well, she said even River Road, but Santa Fe, McHenry, and even River Road are like parking lots during commuter hours. So if any of you have friends or family that have to drive those routes during commuter hours, it's just miserable. It's just, you're just sitting there. It's awful. I don't understand for how anyone would want to build in this beautiful, all of this wonderful green belt, the agricultural land that was the best part of this area when I was growing up. That's what made it unique. That's what made it friendly and wonderful, because of all the farmers. That was my opinion. It just seems like for future generations, it's going to be horrible. It's just going to be sidewalks and roads and just everything paved over, house after house, and where's the water going to come from? There's already a huge problem with water, and they want to take more, not you, sorry, they want to take more of the water from the existing wells or the existing aquifer. It's just for so many reasons, it's just a horrible idea, a recipe for disaster. I don't have children or grandchildren, so anybody who does, I can't imagine why you'd want to let it just keep everything being paved over. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Walton. I live on Hoag Road, and I live on the bluff that looks over the river bottom. I've lived there for my whole life, pretty much, and it's an interesting geology down there. You have the river, then you have the river bottom, and then you have the bluffs. And I believe high density should be on Oakdale and Coffee, Tully and Carver, up closer to the city. Out that area, there's a lot of small ranches and ranchettes, and I don't think the river bottom can take the pressure of high-density housing. And I challenge you, all of you, to drive down there, walk through that beautiful farmland, the walnut orchards and the pumpkin fields, and you'll see one of the great wonders of the world. And we don't want to cover that with blacktop and cement and rooftops, all that nonsense. You know, pick that dirt up in your hands and go down to the river, and it's just a beautiful setting. I don't think we should build on river bottoms. Sacramento hasn't learned. They have floods and just all kinds of crises with building close to rivers and stuff. But if you must chop up that land, I suggest ranchettes, and the larger, the parcels closer to the river. And as you go back and get on the bluff, then do the smaller parcels as you go towards town. Kind of bring it back like that. Something to think about, but really the thing is you need to get out there and look at it before you vote and decide. See it with your own eyes. Just a beautiful piece of land. It's a big, big, big farm, so it is a big unit that can be farmed. People complain about having 10 acres and 20 acres, that they're not farmable because they're not profitable. But this is a nice unit. So anyways, study the geology, have second thoughts about it, and make good judgment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Conrato. I live on Hoag Road. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. This Riverwalk is a project that we all that are here tonight disapprove of. It's prime agricultural land. I'm sure you're already aware of that. On a floodplain, you're already aware of that. Traffic is congested. They've already widened the bridge. They're not going to be doing that for decades again. It's already dangerous for people to go out onto McHenry, whether you're exiting McHenry or going onto McHenry. Already traffic is backed up from Vlad Road all the way past the light on River Road, and people truly are in danger. If you're turning off of McHenry, you can be rear-ended, and if you're trying to get onto McHenry, you are there for minutes. And again, at risk, especially if you're turning left against the traffic. There is, as everyone has mentioned to you tonight already, there's a riparian, there's a river, it's Stanislaus River that drives alongside the land they're going to be developing. It's a habitat, of course, for wild animals, as well as land, the river. You would be, if you approved this project, it would be on a floodplain. You would be, I don't know how, responsible, but that's something to look at very seriously. You're talking about the developers not being here to take responsibility for that, whether it's loss of life or loss of property. There's also, I believe, that the access roads they have talked about are not adequate for the amount of homes and cars that will be on this land. In the NOP, they talk about housing numbers, but when you look further in the NOP, there's room for growth of those numbers. So the actual number of houses that can be built is higher than they initially state. I'm just going to deviate for a minute. When I called the city clerk today to see if the draft EIR had been released to you, her response to me was that they have not received a proposal yet, which to me implied that why are you concerned? Why are you calling now about this? And we're concerned because Riverwalk has been in the Riverbank plans for several years. It appears to me to be a done deal in a lot of ways. I feel there's a high expectation that there'll be approval for this project, and I want to very seriously request that you consider all the implications and consequences of this decision. Once that prime agricultural land is paved over, there will be no going back. There will be no, you can't replace that land, and you can't re-bring it back to its natural state. Another point that I want to make is that Riverbank is the lead agency for this. So it's not often I get a response of, well, you know, we're just facilitating meetings. We're just, you know, it's not, we're not doing this project. We're just helping, you know, they've requested us to help. But I think that you're the lead agency, and there's responsibility and probably legal impact for that position. So again, I would consider very carefully before you make an approval on this project. Jamie Agers also mentioned this already, but we were not notified, anyone along the bluff around the entire area of almost 1,000.
30 seconds.
Thank you. We're not notified. And I know that, okay, again, there's an issue of schools. There, once this project is approved, even though there's 55 years of older housing, it doesn't mean that that's what it'll stay. And if there's schools, right now, the schools don't have the ability to weigh in on this project, so that's something else to consider very carefully. Commercial, hospitals, buildings, everything, all of those, sewage, the infrastructure, everything is inadequate, and I don't know how that will be paid for, except on your citizens that exist already and the new ones, which is increase of taxes. I think those are all very serious issues that need to be considered, even though on the surface it may seem that it's being taken care of. I don't believe that to be true when the whole picture is there. Okay, thank you very much, and please, please consider carefully and don't suggest this goes to your city commissioners. Thank you.
Are there any more public comments?
There's one on Zoom. So you'll not go for a speaker?
Annabelle, go ahead and speak.
That's not true.
Hello?
Go ahead, Annabelle.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm on? Am I on, Gabriel?
Yes, you're on.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Annabelle Gammun, and I come tonight to speak a little bit on a different theme matter, but I have a couple of questions to ask. But before that, I would just like to say, the SB 1000 was passed by the legislator and Governor Brown signed in 2016. This is the environmental justice in local land use planning. And the reason I bring this up is I would like to ask whether the city of Riverbank identified the specific location of each disadvantaged community in Riverbank and its sphere of influence. Is the city of Riverbank compliant with Senate Bill 1000? Rob Bonta, the California attorney general, just visited Modesto, addressing the shortage of affordable housing. In Stanislaus County this summer, about 15,000 households struggled to find an affordable house to live. My questions are, how many units of affordable housing is in the Riverwalk? My questions are, how many units of affordable housing is in the River Walk specific plan? Has Riverbank identified one or more disadvantaged communities in its jurisdiction? The State of California and also federal government is getting very interested in environmental justice in local land use planning. So I would like to have more conversation about this as we go through all of the specific plan processes of River Walk. River Walk, I don't believe at the moment, has any plans for the units of affordable housing. And there are many other issues already mentioned by the previous speakers, which I don't want to repeat. So as we go along this long process, I hope that we can have an open conversation about the real issues at hand here in San Marcos County, California, and also our country. We are having climate change, things happening to us. And this plan, the River Walk specific plan, in my opinion, just has no priority at this point. And this area has been trying to be developed, and because it is floodplain, it could not even pass the easement for conservation easement for agriculture because it is floodplain. So my common sense tells me, if it's not good enough to farm, how in the world could it be good enough for housing? Or senior housing? Or anybody to live in? When it rains, the water comes from the bottom. I know it because I see it. So as we come along, I hope we can have a good conversation between each other and look at the facts and also comply with the rules. I think as of 2018, when you do amendments in the general plan and make amendments at least with two of the necessary agenda in the general plan, like air circulation, transportation, you do have to have environmental justice policies put into place. So I hope we have a conversation about that. Otherwise, I think we need to pause before we keep on just building. We do need housing, but we do need affordable housing more than we need what Crossroads is doing and what, for sure, what River Walk is planning to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
I don't see any on Zoom.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board, unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or a member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission Board. Item 2.1 is posting as the agenda for the December 21st, 2021 meeting. And item 2.2 is approval of the December 21st, 2021 agenda. Maybe we have a recommendation? Annabelle, please.
I move that we approve items 2.1 and 2.2.
I will second that.
Okay. Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bassel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearings. The public notice for items 3.1 and 3.2 was published on December 8th, 2021 in the Riverbank News. Item 3.1 is the Architecture and Site Plan Review, file number 21-0031, One Church.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight's item will be presented by Associate Planner Salazar. And as you'd mentioned, this is the Architectural and Site Plan Review of an atrium and prayer room for the One Church on Oakdale Road, 6101 Oakdale Road. Thank you.
Bear with me a moment, please. Sorry.
Yeah, I can add a little bit of that way apart.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. Members of the audience.
Your mic.
Okay. All right, good evening, Planning Commission, members of the audience, applicants. This item is for One Church Assembly, which is an architectural site plan review application. And as noted by our Chair Stewart, the applicant is requesting approval for a new atrium and prayer room structure measuring approximately 1,910 square feet. And this would be added to an existing church. And this is the assessor's map of the existing site. It's on the west of Oakdale Road, south of Patterson Road, and north of Morel Road. This is an area of UOV subject property, which is for One Church. It measures approximately 2.1 acres with 37 parking spaces. There are three buildings on the property. And this is the general plan designation of the site, which is LDR, Lower Density Residential. And the project will be consistent with the general plan in the following areas. 2.3, traffic circulation. 8.3, high-quality buildings. 10.1, safe access. 10.7, strong pedestrian orientation. And 10.13, connectivity. And the zoning designation for the property is C2, general commercial. And these are the current building elevations of the subject property. There is the existing church. The atrium and prayer room structure will be added to the north elevation and then extend a little into the west and eastern elevation. Some of the architectural features include gray metal exterior, which will match and be consistent with the existing church. They will have a brick wing scotting on the base along the exterior of the structure. They also have large transparent windows, which makes it not only pleasing, but then transparent and provides an opening space, which makes it visually attractive for those inside and outside. And then we have a copper, a nice copper roof that will enhance the new structure. And they brought a sample that's in the back in case anyone wants to see it. And these are the elevations of the various facets of the new prayer room and atrium structure. As you can see, the large windows going out through the exit and entering the atrium prayer room, which is kind of like an open patio area. And this is the floor plan. It will be exterior outside the existing restrooms as you walk out the church. In the south-southern area, this is the prayer room that you can see, which provides privacy for prayer and for meetings. And then to the north will be this large patio atrium area, which provides an opening for church members as they leave the church, but also provides a space for gatherings and to share and enjoy each other's presence. This is the site plan of the subject property. Regarding the environmental, the proposed project is exempt from CEQA according to and pursuant to CEQA Guideline, Section 15332, parentheses A through E, Class 32, infill development projects. Regarding the public notice, we are required by the state to notify folks that are 300 feet from the property. There was 37 business owners and residents around the property. We also made sure that there was a public notice in the newspaper notifying folks at the meeting. And staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve Resolution Number 2021-019, to approve the Architectural Site Plan Review Number 07-2021 for One Church. And staff is here and the applicant is here to also answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the other commissioners have a question?
I have a question. Does it take up any space where the parking spots are?
Thank you, Vice Chair Link. It does not take up any space. They have an existing concrete area outside the church, and it's going to expand into that area. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Does anyone here wish to speak to this project?
I don't know. I'm modeling a house. I'm not being against this project. Hi, my name's Tracy Trab. I am the campus pastor at the Riverbank Campus. And currently, our lobby is a hallway with bathrooms on the side, and it's about 10 by 10. And so we're excited also with what we see, the building and the plans of the property south of us. We want to make sure that we're staying in line and that we're presenting something in our city that matches the quality and the stuff that's going around. So we appreciate it. We appreciate the city helping us with all the planning and getting this put together. And so I just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity. We love being a part of Riverbank, and we want to make sure our property represents Riverbank well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 3.1, the Architectural and Site Review Plan for One Church.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Maybe we have a real call vote, please.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 3.2, which is a conditional use permit for Latin Freeze. Is staff going to explain this?
Yes, this next item is a conditional use permit. The existing building where this business wants to move forward on had originally cut and packaged chickens. And so the reason why this is coming forward is that they moved out of that building, and there is some question whether or not the building has been empty a year or not. But because it is a slightly different use, we requested that they come forward with the conditional use permit, and they agreed. And Associate Planner Salazar will be presenting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Hello again, Planning Commission. This is applications for Latin Freeze for a conditional use permit. Latin Freeze submitted a conditional use permit application to allow, to get a permitted, to be approved conditionally for a food processing facility at 6212 Roselle Avenue. And this is the assessor's map of the subject property. It's located on the east of Roselle and south of Patterson Road. It's located south of the Munchen business, and to the west is residential. And here's an area of the site. This is in our M1 industrial area of the city, the light industrial zone. The general plan designation is IBP, which is Industrial Business Park. The zoning designation, as I mentioned, is M1 Light Industrial. This is the current building elevation. The applicant does not plan to do any changes, additions to the subject property. They may do some tenant improvements, but those are done and approved with the Building Department and over the counter. And this is the floor plan of the subject property of the new business. And they do, it's a Mexican-type ice cream business, and they're going to have different types of flavors. Some of them that they've mentioned are like mango, avocado, different types. You kind of see these typically like in Mexican grocery stores. This is the site plan of the existing, or of the proposed business. You see their production area, warehouse storage facility. They've done a lot of remodeling and renovating, renovating to existing building to make sure it's up to current building codes and up to their standards. The owner was previously one of the managers at La Michoacana, also ice cream business. And regarding the environmental, the proposed project is exempt from any additional analysis pursuant to CEQA, Article 5, 15061B, parentheses 3, by the common sense exemption. That CEQA only applies to projects that have a direct, or potential for causing a direct physical change in the environment or a reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change to the environment. Public noticing, it was published in Riverbank News on December 8th. 26 residents, property owners, and businesses were notified 300 feet surrounding the property, and that was melded on Friday, December 3rd. And staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2021-020, to approve conditional use permit Number 02-2021. And staff's here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And I believe the applicant's also on the phone in case there are any questions for them as well, if necessary.
No questions? No questions? I have one. I just, there won't be any direct sales to the public? This would just be the food prep?
So they do want to provide a small, like retail area, I think like 100 square feet that they mentioned, just very small, just in case folks want to sample if other businesses or grocery store businesses want to sample the kind of ice cream that they sell. Folks will be able to try them out there or even buy like a small portion. But they envision that being just a real small component of their operation.
Thank you. Thank you. No any questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this project? No one?
No one on Zoom, yes.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item 3.2.
I will second that.
Okay. Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. County referral. Try them number 5. County referral. Yes. Okay, are there any founding commission comments?
No.
Well, we're going to move to item 6, county correspondence.
I do not have any county correspondence to share at this meeting.
Thank you. Item number 7, staff comments.
I'll just share that at the last city council meeting, the council approved the second reading of the ordinance that, excuse me, updates the... updates the accessory dwelling unit section. So 30 days from that date, it becomes law and on our books. I do not have an update on the sets of plans that the city is creating with the other cities in the county. I should hear something after the first of the year. And once we provide comments on that version of the plans, and this will be our second, third version, then the county public works will be directed to plan check them. So we'll get them ready and get them printed, and then when folks come in and want to build an ADU, they'll be able to just choose one and pull a building permit. So we look forward to that. And it's kind of a side portion of that. I am currently working on an ordinance amendment that would allow for a planned development of tiny house villages. We have one village that's wanting to move forward. Business owner currently couldn't find someplace for one of her workers to live. And so she and her husband decided they want to move forward and create tiny villages to help our service workers here in the city, many of which are driving in from Modesto and Escalon in order to work here. That's the only item I have for staff comments other than I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hoping that you stay healthy and that it's all relaxing for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With those kind words, we're turned.